I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our first item on our agenda is end the closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Number one, it would be discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, resignation of specific officers, appointees, employees of any public body. Economic development. On the agenda early, you might have seen Project 2014-047. That project will not be discussed in closed meeting. I understand that the items are not completely ready. Need a motion to go into closed meeting?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to go into closed meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
One of these days, I'm gonna say no, just to have a no on the record here.
So what's wrong with my...
It's the one and only time every year I get to do that. Good evening, folks.
It's a lot of power.
It is, but that's... Good evening, folks. This is our first meeting of the year, so we'll be going through our organizational elections in just a minute, but first I need to read us out of closed meeting. We need a motion to come out of closed meeting.
Motion.
So moved. Second.
All right. Vicki, do we call the roll on that?
We do. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion to certify the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
At this time, we'll open our meeting with an invocation. This is a time at the beginning of the meeting where we take a few moments and have quiet reflection on the business of the evening at hand. After that, I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll move forward with the agenda. So if we could please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. As I mentioned earlier, this is the first meeting of the new year for the Board, so we have a couple of organizational matters to take care of, and the first item is for election of Chair for the upcoming year. At this point, the floor is open to receive nominations for Chair.
Mr. Meadows, I would like to nominate Bill Brown for Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Biggs. Are there any other nominations for Chair?
Move nominations be closed.
We have a motion to close nominations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All right. Clerk, would you please call the roll on Bill Brown being the Chair?
I sure will. Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
I guess I get to vote for myself, aye.
Six ayes.
Great. And there's the gavel back on the door.
Craig, I tell you what, if you use that thing, you've got to kind of... Before I move on, I thank you all for the confidence that you have in me for me to serve as your Chair for another year, and I thank each and every one of you all for the assistance that you've given me over the past year. Let me see here, let me... Okay. Our next order of business is election of Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
Like to nominate Mary Biggs.
Not any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
Have a motion and a nomination for them to be closed? Would the clerk please call the roll?
I'll second the nomination.
Oh, you second?
Second.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mary. You're here again as Vice Chair. Okay.
We'll try to work really hard whenever he buys behalf.
Okay. Organizational matters, as selection of regular meeting dates. And I think that they all have been... Okay, go ahead, Matt. You just gonna make a comment?
Well, just to start discussion, I need to make a motion that we continue to meet at 7:15 PM.
7:15? Just keep meeting at 7:15?
On the second and fourth Mondays.
The same time?
Same dates and same times.
That in a form of a motion?
That is a motion, yes. Okay. Yeah, it's a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we continue to meetings at the same time and same dates. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Mr. Chairman, I meant to mention at the beginning of the meeting, and I apologize, that Supervisor Tuck is on his way back from Charlotte. He had a... He was on a trip and indicated that he would try to be here later in the meeting, but he did want to extend his apologies for not being here at the beginning of the meeting, but he's on his way back. So I told him I would do that, and I forgot. I'm sorry.
Okay. Subject B, Rules of Order and Parliamentary Procedures. Any...
So moved.
I gotta get back to...
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we adopt, I guess, the current parliamentary procedures.
Tab C.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay. Subject C, Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct.
Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Can I just make a brief statement about this?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that this is... I'm very proud that the Board decides to adopt this every year, and I'm very proud of my colleagues here on the Board that we do our best to adhere to this in every interaction that we have with the public and with each other.
I agree. Thank you. Did too.
Any... Okay. Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
The next order of business would be public hearings. Subject A, the following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the Berks section of the Roanoke Times on December 28, 2014, and January 4, 2015, and the item for public hearing is fiscal year 2015-2016 county budget. The purpose of this public hearing is to gather citizen comments on the upcoming 2015-2016 fiscal year budget. I do have one individual who's signed up to address the Board this evening under the budget, and that would be Mr. Barbara Skinner.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just state your name and address, and you have five minutes to address the Board.
Thank you. Good evening. Once again, my concern this year and focus is on the MCPS budget. It looks as though Superintendent Blackburn will present a need space budget for around $180 million, as this is the figure which would return MCPS to the spending level adjusted for inflation prior to the recession. I brought some information tonight for consideration by this Board, and I'll leave copies with Ms. Sweeney for distribution to Board members and Mr. Meadows. First, I have a synopsis of an efficiency report done by the Center for American Progress titled "Return on an Educational Investment, 2014." The study included Virginia school districts and examined academic achievement for each dollar spent in comparison to other districts in the state. The color-coded ranking went from red, lowest rank, through orange, orange-yellow, light-yellow, light-green, and dark-green, which was the highest rank. MCPS was rated orange, the second from the lowest ranking. According to this study, MCPS definitely has room to improve in efficiency compared to other districts in Virginia. Congratulations to Floyd County, which earned the highest rank. I've also included a table from new research conducted by Andrew J. Coulson from the Cato Institute that shows that in Virginia, a large increase in education spending between 1972 and 2012 has resulted in flat achievement on SAT scores. Additionally, I've included a table from earlier work by Coulson, which shows a similar pattern nationally over the same period. And the other studies show that more money does not necessarily lead to better results. This coupled with the efficiency report on MCPS leads me to believe that we need better and smarter budgets for education rather than more money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For anyone else in the audience who would like to address budget in this public hearing reference to the proposed 2015-2016 school budget.
Or budget period.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add as well that once the budget's presented the first of March, there will of course be a public hearing after that for citizens to have further comment on the budget at that point, but certainly appreciate Ms. Skinner being here tonight, and any comments or concerns regarding the budget are always welcome by email or contacting one of us here at the office.
Saying no one else coming forward, we will close this public hearing. The next item on our agenda is public address, and this is a time when anyone in the audience can address the Board on any issue dealing with county business. And I have two people who's signed up, and the procedure is that you come to the microphone, you have five minutes, state your name and address, and direct all your comments to the Board. The first person signed up on the public address is... Is that Betsy Dwayne?
Yes, that would be me.
Okay. And it's used in...
Use and enjoyment of our property.
Yeah, okay.
My name is Betsy Dwayne. I live in Shawsville... Well, my husband and I live in Shawsville, right at the edge of Christiansburg, at the corner of the rural Mount Pleasant Road and Archer Road. Mr. Creed, you are our supervisor. I'm here this evening to discuss the 18-month ongoing clean fill and proposed pig farm operation across the road from our property. We wrote to the Board about this issue a year ago, and again on December 13 of this past year, 2014. Both these letters raised our concerns about this project and the damage they appear to be causing to county and state property, as well as to our personal property. In the latest letter, we also asked the Board for assistance with several issues that remain unresolved with our neighbors, and made several recommendations addressing the lack of regulations regarding clean fill activities. So my first question tonight is, did you receive the email of December 13, which was addressed to Mr. Creed as our supervisor and to Chris Tuck as the Board's liaison to the Planning Commission, in which we CC'd the entire Board? If you did not receive that letter, I have copies here.
I don't remember.
I don't need them.
No.
Did you get... I gotta need them.
Okay, now that you have copies, my second question is, does the Board have any plans to help us resolve these problems?
In a public address session, we listen, we don't respond back and forth, so if you have some questions, you can go on and ask them. We won't respond, but we'll make note of them.
I'll just read to you the highlights. We have two problems that continue to have a negative impact on the use of enjoyment of our property. We are living in an A1-zoned area, and my understanding is that we have as much right for use and enjoyment of our property as do our neighbors. Unfortunately, their land use designs have caused us enormous distress since July of 2013, when we moved in with no end in sight. For more than 18 months, we've endured almost constant construction sounds that are above noise level restrictions. We have an app on a tablet, and we have results of that. We've encountered traffic nuisances from construction equipment traffic on the small mountain road, and live in fear that the currently destroyed road surface will result in serious injury or death at the downhill curve abiding our property. We believe our stream quality and environment have been compromised by silty runoff from the landfill activity, but we've been unable to convince the erosion and sediment control project managers to actually visit our land, talk with us, and provide an opinion as to the source of the problem. Our neighbors have posted a professionally printed sign at the entrance to the landfill announcing the opening of a pig farm, and according to a private conversation I had with the property owner, a slaughterhouse. On some maps, the proposed pig farm parcel appears to about the site of the start of Cook's Ranch, which is a named tributary of the New River, and it runs next to the landfill and across our property. We're concerned about the size of the planned fireman's proximity to water and potential commercial aspects in an A1-zoned area where parcels do not routinely run larger than five acres. We're not aware that our neighbors have submitted a permit request for a slaughter operation. Mr. Tuck checked for me in October, and as such, no permit had been requested, nor have they received permit to post a sign. But even if a permit has been issued for the sign, it's unconscionable that the Board would allow its posting without assessing the impact on the neighbors and without having issued a permit for a commercial endeavor, which would include then a neighborhood impact study and a public hearing. A county tax assessor informed us recently that if an activity cannot be seen, smelled, or heard, it generally has no effect on the other's property value. However, the current sign is located such that as you come down Mount Pleasant Road, you see the sign and you see our beautiful wooded property. And everyone who visits us, including delivery trucks, delivery truck drivers comments on the pig farm sign. So we believe that should we wish to sell our property with this sign posted, it would be impossible, and we're deeply worried that if a commercial activity ensues, we will face not just the loss of use and enjoyment, but also financial ruin because we will be unable to sell our property. So we're asking the Board for assistance to get a date certain that the landfill activity will be completed, which has been going on for 18 months.
I'm sorry, you have five minutes.
My five minutes are up?
Yes, ma'am.
I think I made my point.
But we do have the information.
I hope I made my point.
Yeah. Follow up.
Thank you.
Okay. The next individual signed up would be Cindy Turner.
Good evening, members of the Board, and thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. My name is Cindy Turner. I live at 1690 Eller Road in Christiansburg, and I have lived in this community for about 30 years, and I'm very comfortable here. And that is due in large part to our area law enforcement. I wish to publicly thank our area law enforcement and their families for their service and their sacrifice, their spouses, children, parents, siblings, et cetera, spend many holidays, birthdays, and anniversaries without their loved ones in order that we may be safe. In addition to enduring these absences, the families also spend many hours concerned about the welfare of their loved one who is in law enforcement. Excuse me. So also wish to thank the families for sharing with us. Lastly, I wish to thank this Board for approving the funding for body cameras for our Sheriff's Department. These cameras, I believe, will protect not only our officers and our citizens, but it will also eliminate many opportunities for doubt, which can result in dire circumstances. Our law enforcement in our communities are going through really tough times right now, as we all know. Never before has it been more important not only to realize how blessed we are, but also to openly appreciate and to actively support our law enforcement and their families in any way we can. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Those was the only two people I had signed up, but here's an opportunity now after the people who had signed up, that if it's anyone else in the audience who would like to address the Board, they could do so at this time. Saying no one else coming forward, we will close the public address session of this meeting. Our next item of business is the addendum. We have no addendum this evening, so the next item would be consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is it any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next item on our agenda would be old business, reselling and special use permit against NRVP and PLLC properties. There's... Have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is it any discussion?
And this is, just to refresh our memory, this is about the recycling facility that we discussed a few meetings ago.
It is. The former Toddson Chrysler Dodge facility out on Radford Road.
Thank you.
Let me make one...
Okay, go ahead.
And that was... I made it at the last one. I have no reason to not want those folks out there. It will find me, but they do need to go out there, understanding that there have been floodwaters up in that front building where the car goes there, so that's all I...
Up around the showroom is where you're talking about, that building?
All through there. It's in... Foot and half took a little water. It does flood.
Any other comments?
I'd like to say one thing before we both. I've been down there several times and talked to several of them down there. I think it'd be a good thing for Plum Creek, I really do. And when he closes the other one, it'd get the traffic off the road, and the gentleman's lived there his whole life, so I think he's gonna do that community real well.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
New business subject, Board of Supervisors' annual appointments to the Board and Commissions for 2015. And you can see on our list here, and there's quite a few Boards and Commissions, and this is just a few of them, and so many of them that's not even listed on the appointment. Where do we wanna start?
I think before we've said, do we wanna keep all those we have?
I think Mr. Tuck expressed, he knew he would be late to this meeting, and he was saying, I think he said he liked to keep the ones that he was on.
Yes.
And I don't know what he was on, I knew he was on Planning Commission.
Right.
At EDA or something, right?
He's on the AFD Advisory Board.
Oh, AFD.
And the Planning Commission, and Montgomery County Improvement Council.
I would be fine with keeping my same appointments for next year as well.
I'm okay with mine.
I'm okay.
Well...
Todd was on Parks and Recreation. Yeah. The first Thursdays of each month, but he has to work on Thursdays now, so he cannot do Parks and Recreation any longer.
What time of the day or whatever?
Parks is what? Seven.
Seven o'clock on...
The first Thursdays. First Thursday.
If no one else wants to do that, I will do it. If someone else wants to do it, please jump in.
They are... I tell you, I served on that committee for about four or five years, and they're one of the best committees, a fun group to serve on, and you have a lot of fun with those people.
Todd, if you were to step down, is there something else that you would wanna?
I want... I can do it if you want me to, Todd. I have been conflicted many Mondays, third Mondays, because of my service that's required on the Social Services Board, and I think that I do have to give that position up. So I did speak to Todd about it, and if there's anybody else, I don't want to, you know, just say one person, but Todd indicated that he could do that, and so I'm going to take that one off, my name, and if Todd or anybody else on the Board wants to do that, I would appreciate it very much.
Was that DSS or something?
That's the DSS Board, isn't it?
That's the... Yes, the DSS Board, it's Department of Social Services.
We have a separate appointment.
It's a term.
It's a term appointment?
It's a term appointment.
Okay.
Oh, so it's not on here. So if...
So with that, there could be consensus on that, but we'd need to have it bring that back to the Board.
Right. But Todd, would you... I don't know, wait till I finish your stocking here?
Sure.
Todd, would you be interested in doing that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have to bring it back. So we can bring that back to the Board as some... Thank you. Otherwise, I'm fine.
All of these, according... You have the old sheet, the old, I mean, last year's appointments?
You have the... It's in your drop box under tab 1G.
Okay. But I'm trying to make sure that we have just about everything.
Sorry, it's tab I.
I. Tab I, annual B, whatever it is. Okay, got it. Come on.
Yeah, Todd.
Excuse me, I think everything's covered. Yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I think we have, I guess, everything fairly covered, and we have to change Parks and Recreation to... You said you would do that, Mr. Creed? Mr. Creed will do Parks and Recreation.
Todd's gonna do a nuts thing that's not on here.
Okay. But is that, does that fill everything up, the way? Okay, I guess, let me go back to the agenda. I guess we'd have to take a, a motion and a vote on these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would move the appointments for 2015 with the changes that we have made.
A second. Have a motion and a second on the appointments for 2015. Is it any discussion?
To really, on the list that we have this evening, the only change was Supervisor Creed for Supervisor King.
Right, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Okay, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Subject B, Resolution of Support, Change the Name of the New River Valley Planning District Commission to the New River Valley Regional Commission. Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is it any discussion?
No, I would like to say that I have, you know, I did attend the last meeting, and we did talk about that the meeting before, but a little bit at the last meeting, too. And all members of the commission were given reasons as to why it would be pertinent to, to go ahead and to change this. Most of the Planning District Commissions, I understand, have gone to regional as the word because it, it does include a number of entities in, in the area where we are. So I would second and go along with what's already been done, that we changed the name to, to that. I know I'm on the MPO for Roanoke, and they've changed theirs to a Transportation Regional Commission. So, I mean, it's really, there are different names for what's going on. But anyway, this is important, I think, to, to do this. And the commission, certainly, the whole commission that I know of, as I know, approves it, right? Thank you, Kevin. Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Subject C, Resolution of Appreciation, B, Wendell Jones. A resolution of appreciation to Montgomery County School Board, because he was chairman at the time, B Wendell Jones. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
It's time for the county attorney's report.
Number four, Mr. Chair.
County administrator's report.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of brief items. You see on the agenda, two items listed under my report. One is cigarette tax, and one is naming a bridge with Senate Bill 753. The cigarette tax, I just wanted to let you know that Delegate Yost has introduced a bill to allow Pulaski County and Montgomery County to levy a cigarette tax, the proceeds of which could be used for capital needs for schools. There's also been a couple of other bills introduced to allow counties to levy a cigarette tax as well, so we'll keep an eye, we'll keep a watch on those to see if they move forward. But it was interesting to see that that may be an opportunity for some revenue, and one of our, our legislative priorities has been to allow the counties to have equal taxing authorities, equal taxing authority to the other jurisdictions. And, you know, that would be another way to try to generate some revenue for our community. Senator Carrico has introduced a bill, Senate Bill 753, to rename or to designate the New River Bridge is on Interstate 81 as the Trooper Andrew Fox Memorial Bridge. I have not been able to get back with Senator Carrico to find out who requested that change, but that's a bill that has been put in, and we have checked with VDOT, have not heard yet if that bridge is designated as such. The local jurisdictions are responsible for paying for the signage for the change. So we're trying to get a little more information, so I can advise you on whether, on whether we need to take more action on that or not. But that bill popped up as being submitted, and the county administrator in Pulaski and I are watching it.
Can we write a joint letter to Senator Carrico's office and request information?
I've sent an email asking, but I haven't seen, I haven't gotten any response yet. So I'm, I'm a little curious as to the source of that request, but.
And also ask that, about the impact of the money?
Yeah.
Does he understand that he's asking to have something changed, but yet the localities have to pay for it? And how much of an estimate would that cost? And again, the request is coming, and I have nothing against naming anything after a police officer, but the request is coming from the state to the county, and again, we're put in the predicament of having to pay for it.
Absolutely. That's the reason I wanted to bring it to your attention. We've got, I've got an email in to find out who requested it, and also an email into VDOT. Pete Huber and I both emailed VDOT and said, how much will it cost?
If it's, if it's requested by the state, couldn't we just tell them, you know, they didn't, drive from the habit, or they need to put it up? Give them our permission.
Pete and I have already received an email from VDOT, also making us aware of this bill, and also making us aware that the localities are responsible for the signage on the interstate if it's changed. So we're following through on that. I just wanted to make you aware that, that that was out there. Two other legislative things I just wanted to mention, or one other legislative thing. The bill that we had last year regarding transferring some authority from the PSA to the county, or not transferring, also giving the county authority regarding connections, that bill was going to be carried by Senator Edwards this year. I talked to Delegate Yost, he carried the bill last year, and if you remember, it, it made it out of committee, then it got referred back to committee, and it didn't go anywhere. Delegate Yost already had a full plate. I talked to Delegate Rush. He had some concerns about the bill, but Senator Edwards agreed to carry it, so it'll be coming from the Senate side. We had some, I actually had a conversation with Delegate Yost and Senator Edwards about, you know, we wanted it on both sides, both houses, but there was some feeling that it may stand a much better chance coming from the Senate side to the House than it would being introduced on both sides. So we'll, I'll keep you posted once that bill has a number and let you know where that goes. Lastly, I did get a call a couple of weeks ago from Corbin Teague and Representative Griffith's office, just acknowledging that he, that Representative Griffith had received the letter that we sent, that I sent to the federal elected officials about the Mountain Valley Pipeline Project. Mr. Teague just indicated Representative Griffith received it, and he was aware of our concerns. He's the only one, he's the only federal senator or legislator that I've heard from. And so I'll certainly keep you posted if I hear any more from, from those folks. Mr. Chair, that's all I've got this evening. And congratulations to you and the vice chair again for another year. I look forward to working with you.
Yeah, we don't know any better, do we, Mary? Okay. Board members' reports. Mr. Creed?
I've got one thing here that I think we all need to look at. You know, it hasn't been but six months ago that we had restrictions on how many chickens you could have in your home if it's anywhere close to, I don't know whether we ever set a yardage amount or not, but if it's closer to your land than it is to the land that the person that lives there has, I really think and hope that we can come up with the same type and amount of number of hogs that you can keep at any one site in a residential area. I think that's something 99.99% of the county would justify and.
Can we have, do we allow hogs in a residential area?
No, I think they, I think they're only allowed in A1. Pretty sure.
I don't know that we can allow any in a residential area.
Well, we did the step for, for the chickens, I know that. What's the difference? They're both raised for, for their meat or for their, for the eggs or whatever happens.
I'd say the aroma for one is a lot stronger than the aroma from the other.
Yeah, if anything, that's the one we need to put the.
The hogs.
The reservations on.
We can, we can certainly do some research on that. I know there's, there's been a lot of discussion over the last several years of allowing chickens to be raised in, in residential areas, but I believe that's the only farm animal.
I think that's what is your furniture, that's what we allow.
Right.
Right now, when we talk about resident, we're talking about residential zoning.
Right.
There's a lot of neighborhoods that are residential in use, but they're actually A1.
Okay.
So we're talking about zoning, but yeah, the, I don't know, a few years, a few months back, Planning Commission and this board, I thought adopted, you can have so many chickens in residential, there's certain restrictions.
Yeah, that was Mr. Tuck's.
Right.
Was the one that's trying to get that.
But there is no, that's the only one.
What I'm thinking, too.
That allows any agricultural, I believe, I think in RR you can have horses or something, and those are certain lot, size.
We, we tell people they can't have so many dogs, or they want to have a kennel, but they can have as many hogs as they want to, sound like, and don't have, no restrictions. Some problem there.
Let us look into that.
Well, there is the intense agricultural, but that's, I have a lot of hogs, I mean, that's, you're right, they could have, they can have almost as many hogs as they want. If you get up into hundreds and hundreds, then it may become an intense agricultural operation, and that's different.
Yeah, for the size of this. The size of this does probably limit, it's have to be a hundred hogs, but it, it gets on up quite close to that. And a couple of years, people bought their lands right around where this big ravine was at, and certainly don't need hogs here.
Is this the same, are we talking about the same person? Is this Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I don't know if this is proper time to follow up, but I didn't really understand the whole thing, so is there a way to find out more information or know what's going on there?
I already sent an email to Derry to update us tomorrow on what's going on.
Yeah, we'll have staff touching base to find out more about that.
Because I don't, I didn't understand. Okay.
Could we, could we perhaps, since we are having a work session on Friday, could the board perhaps be updated on what you find out on Friday?
We'll try.
Very briefly. Thank you.
Whatever we have, we'll be glad to share.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. King?
Just got a couple of things. I'd like to send out thank you to Montgomery County School System for allowing rider fire and several other firemen to come out to the old middle school and have training this weekend. We had a good training Saturday and Sunday. Christiansburg brought two of their ladder trucks out there, and it was really intense training, and I appreciate that. Dan Burn Auto lining that up, and the contractors for allowing us to do that. Hopefully, here in a couple, about two to three more weeks when they get done stripping it, we can go back out and get some more training. And want to remind everybody, we have a oyster supper the first Saturday of February.
Wow, that's coming up quick. That's quick.
Yep. They're always coming quick.
Held up the bar, huh?
No, it's held at elementary school. Yeah.
Saturday the 7th, sound right?
Yeah, it sounds right. First Saturday.
Give a time?
Four to seven.
Four to seven, okay. Got it.
That it, Todd?
That's, thank you, sir.
Ms. Biggs?
Well, I want to thank everybody again for your support and try to do the best job possible as your vice chair. And I wanted to just bring up one item. Ms. Irvin had sent an email to me about the Human Relations Council, and then I forwarded it over to ask Craig about it. She was wanting to know the procedure to go through to get funding. And so he, so Mr. Mo suggested I, I bring it up tonight, and we have a background of, I guess, the funding that we've given so far. In the meantime, I wrote her back asking, you know, what it was they were thinking, and that's the email I forwarded on to you. As you know, there's going to be a dialogue on race event this Saturday, from 10 to 2, I believe, and they're going to use part of the money for that. And in her email, it says that they were, they have $2,000 remaining, and for the next fiscal year, they were thinking between $5,000 to $10,000 to help bridge the gap from conversation to action. Now, I don't know what that exactly means, but that's, I think they're trying to get it reactivated. I'm sure that we could find out what they're thinking. And to date, we have supported conversation, New River Valley, Dialogue on Race, and Leadership, New River Valley. Those are the things they've been involved in. So I thought I would bring it to your attention tonight to see, do we want just to reply back to them, to go through, I guess there's a, a way that you go through requesting funding, and also do we have the background on how much we have given them in the past?
We definitely have the background on, on the past, and it would be staff's suggestion that they go through the process of completing an application, and we can get that to her.
Yeah, we would send her a packet.
Okay.
Of information. She could complete that and send it back in with her request. I traced it back as far as fiscal year 2001. From that period of time up through fiscal year 2011, we provided $1,500 each year. In fiscal year 2011, they did contact us and let us know that they were reorganizing, indicated that they would not need the funds at that point in time, and that they would contact us at such time that they want to make a request again. So it's been $1,500 previously.
Okay. So then the vice back is for them just to go ahead and submit their proper forms through you all, and then it goes through your budgeting process? And in the meantime, do we want to, when they submit the documents, Carol, do they put in there what they want to use the money for?
Yeah, it's, the packet actually asks all that information, pertinent information. They were actually due the end of December, but we'll be glad to go ahead and send it to them. Is the individual in the email the person we should forward that information to?
I'm thinking yes.
Okay, that's what we'll do then.
She's the president now, so it, it looks like they're trying to reorganize.
Well, we'll send that to her and ask her to complete it, and then that should provide the basis of what they would use the funding for.
And then when it comes up during budget discussion, we can discuss that, or if we need any other information, get it from her?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Supervisor Perkins?
I have no report.
Supervisor Gabriel?
Just one brief thing, is that we haven't met, the EDC and the Tourism Council hasn't met, obviously because of the holidays, but, and we're not scheduled to meet until shortly before our next regular meeting, but I was informed by Ms. Bleakley that we might have an ad hoc meeting to have, have an update about the branding initiative, hopefully very soon, in which, if I'm understanding it correctly, might actually be presented with something near the, the final presentation. So that's very exciting, and so hopefully I'll have more information for everybody at the next meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you all for your reports. Then once again, I think we're looking for an exciting day on Friday, January 16th, and we start at about 8:30.
8:30.
8:30 a.m., and.
Got a lot of odds and ends, and.
We'll keep you, keep you busy. 3 p.m., and I don't have any, anything to report, other than say thank you all, and thank you for your support, and, okay, Matt.
Sorry, just one click, you reminded me, I meant to ask this about the work session on Friday.
Right.
Can you just, I saw that the times on the, the, the agenda for today are 8:30 to 3, 3 o'clock, is that what we're working for?
We definitely going to start at 8:30. Well, and there comes Supervisor Tuck.
Yeah.
Chris, I just sent you a text and said, we're getting ready to adjourn.
Wait, we need to adjourn before you actually get something.
Yeah. Come on. Yes, we're going to start at 8:30. We will bring sandwiches in for lunch, so we can keep working. Our goal is to have you out by 3:00.
Okay. I just, I want to make, I, I need to leave by 3:15 at the latest, so I will leave at 3:15.
Y'all can stay as late as you want to, but staff's going to try to wrap it up around 3:00.
Let me, let me say something too. I'm glad Chris just got here, because he, he may fix breakfast.
Oh.
He has been known to.
Y'all won't be to fix breakfast, I'll make breakfast.
Yes, yes. You do will.
No, I don't. Fresh eggs, fresh chicken. I don't know.
Absolutely. Is that motion, Mr. Creed?
You got green eggs.
That's a, that's a request.
Green eggs and ham?
I don't know, but we'll, we'll put some country ham in the key.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, Mr. Tuck, we were going through board reports, now it's your time for your report.
I'm back from Cancun, and, and sorry I'm late, and I apologize if folks...
I didn't tell her where you went, I just said you were on a trip.
Feel so sorry for you.
And boy, I'm a little bit faulted.
That's what we talked about, told you, folks. But you loved us so much that in your absence, I became chair for one more year, and Mary became vice chair for another year, so...
Good deal. As long as I didn't get assigned to every single committee, I'm a, I'm a happy man.
We left that part out.
We left where you were.
Yeah, I think you got AFD, planning, and I think you got one more. What was it? One more, did it end?
Whatever you are. Yeah, whatever you wish to.
Yeah, whatever you are, there's no change.
Okay.
And I don't have anything to report, and so let me try to spowl one time. We are adjourned.